Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Village of Bartlett Board Meeting for August 19, 2014. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's?
Here.
Camer?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Martin?
Present.
Ranky?
Here.
Shipman?
Here.
President Wallace? Here. I ask Pastor Ian Simpkins to do the invocation. I want to first say a couple of things. One, I'm honored to be here. Two, I told a couple of people I have to leave right afterwards, and I promise it's not personal, but if you have to egg my church as a result, I understand. And I wanted to try something a little different, actually. There's a theologian named Richard Foster who talked about the posture of our bodies aligning with our hearts, and so this may feel a little strange, but I want to ask, rather than folding your hands, would you just open your palms with me, face them up? And I think this communicates two things. One, it's sort of like a letting go, a bit of some of that control, but it's also like an invitation of God to kind of speak into our lives. So I'm going to take just five seconds of silence. I know that, like many of you, you've rushed here, you're going to rush somewhere else. Let's just pause, breathe a second, and then I'll pray for us. Father God, I thank you for the opportunity to pause, to breathe, to reflect. I thank you for the men and women in this room that you've charged leadership with. God, I pray that you would give them guidance and insight and wisdom. Thank you for the many people that call this place home. May we lead diligently with love and grace. Father, may this time honor you, give us wisdom in how to execute well, and we are so grateful, God, that you are present in this village, you're present in this meeting, and that you call us to love you and to love others well. We give this time to you, we give this agenda to you, and ask that you be honored in it. And we pray these things in your name, and everybody said. Amen. Thank you. Pastor?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Right, consent agenda. All items listed within asterisks on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless the board members still request, in which event the item will be removed in the general order of business and considered an appropriate point on the agenda. At this point, is there anything anybody would like to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Carbonaro, seconded by trustee Martin. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Camer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Three items on the president's report. The first is a proclamation for the Bartlett Lions Club 75th anniversary. I've requested that trustee Aaron's, who's been a lion for many, many years and involved in the Lions Club, read the proclamation.
You're being too kind. Thank you. It's my honor to do so. A proclamation recognizing the Bartlett Lions Club on its 75th anniversary. Whereas on August 28, 1939, the Bartlett Lions Club was chartered and established, then on September 19, 1939, 29 men signed the charter, beginning the organization's many decades of civic service to our community. And whereas for 75 years, the club has supported the causes of Lions International, which includes acting as Knights of the Blind in a Crusade Against Darkness, a 1925 challenge of Helen Keller. And whereas, in addition to collecting refurbished eyeglasses and hearing aids for those in need, today's Bartlett Lions work year-round, sponsoring everything from their annual Easter egg hunt, visit with Santa, and Labor Day dash, to pancake breakfasts, golf outings, candy days, holiday food boxes, and more. And whereas the Fourth of July celebration in Bartlett would not be complete without the eagerly anticipated Bartlett Lions Club Independence Day parade of bands, floats, and nonstop fun. And whereas, process from the group's many events and fundraises, areas to send special needs children to camp, provide diabetes awareness and screenings, offer scholarships to outstanding students, and continue other good works that advance the Lions-We-Serve tradition. Now, therefore, we in the Village of Bartlett, Kane, DuPage, and Cook Counties do hereby proclaim August 23 as Lions' Day. In the Village of Bartlett, we congratulate the Bartlett Lions Club on this milestone anniversary, and furthermore extend our deep appreciation for their hard work, dedication, and their many, many contributions to our village. The generosity of the spirit that these men and women continue to share with us makes our hearts swell beyond lion size. Woo-hoo! (applause) Thank you, Lions. (applause) You know, I'd like to make one clarification. I was not an original member of the Bartlett Lions Club.[357.13][357.13](laughter)
But your husband was.
No.
And I'm assuming they're not going to stop discussing this.
Gosh, I hope not.
Thank you, T.L.
Thank you.
Next item on the president's report is Brock's Class J liquor license request. I intend to grant this subject to the board's approval. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve Brock's Class J liquor.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Carbonaro, seconded by trustee Shipman. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Camer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Will be granted. And finally, on the president's report, we had an opening on this EBA committee, and sometime back, probably longer than I'd like to say because it took me a while to go through some folks' information, but it's always great to have residents step up and request to serve our community on these different committees. And I'm happy to announce that Joe Bano, who's in the audience, if you could stand real quick, and we appreciate your service. And Joe Bano, I'll be appointing him to the zoning board of appeals commission, so thank you, Joe.
That would require a motion of consent to the appointment.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion of consent.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Camer, seconded by trustee Martin. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Camer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Will be granted. And finally, on the president's report, we had an opening on this EBA committee, and some time back, probably longer than I'd like to say because it took me a while to go through some folks' information, but it's always great to have residents step up and request to serve our community on these different committees. And I'm happy to announce that Joe Bano, who's in the audience, if you could stand real quick, and we appreciate your service. And Joe Bano, I'll be appointing him to the zoning board of appeals commission, so thank you, Joe.
That would require a motion of consent to the appointment.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion of consent.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Camer, seconded by trustee Martin. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Camer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you for volunteering, Joe. Next item on the agenda, we kind of under question and answer. Does anybody on the board have questions at this point? Hearing none, we'll move on to the town hall portion of the meeting. At this part of the meeting, we encourage people to step up, address the board. If you do step up to the podium and have something to say, please state your name and your address for the record, and try to keep your comments to three minutes. Anybody want to address the board at this time?
Good evening. My name is Roy Porter. I live at 140 Jody Lane, and I have a question about my taxes. I'm getting the water reclamation district of Chicago. I'm getting taxed for that, and I don't know why. I've been to the assessor's office, I've been to the Hanover Township Assessor's Office, and I'm not getting any answers. We're incorporated, but we're unincorporated. We're well-inseptic. We have no storm sewers, so I'm wondering, where do I go?
That's a good question.
Well, that, let me take a shot at it. I was going to answer that if you lived in Cook County and you were incorporated, that's because on that side of our community in Cook County, they do the treatment in the collection for the wastewater. If you're unincorporated, my guess is the answer may be the same.
Well, we're in the Village of Bartlett.
Pardon?
We're in the Village of Bartlett. It's kind of a unique area because of Liberty School chuckerboarded over, so we are incorporated. I think the whole subdivision of ours should be exempt.
Yeah, let me take a look at your tax bill when we have a moment.
We have no stormwater, no nothing.
No.
Another issue is the mosquito abatement. We're paying taxes for that. We don't see nothing. The whole subdivision. There's about 40 of us.
Okay, and does everybody have the same tax bill issue with their water reclamation?
Right.
Okay. I think it would be a good idea to bring a tax bill in.
We'd be happy to take a look at it.
If I could just get a number, if I could talk to somebody, you know.
Yeah.
And with the mosquito abatement district, we know when they're in town for the incorporated portions, but they have a hotline, and they have numbers, and we'd be happy to...
We're incorporated because of the school. It's kind of a unique situation. We're all well-inseptic, you know, all we have is our culvert.
Okay. We'll take a look at it for you. Thank you.
It's not much money, but I mean, it's something that's got to be brought up.
It doesn't matter how much it is. Thank you. Anybody else like to address the board at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to the standing committee reports. Next item on the agenda is the planning and zoning committee chaired by trustee Camer.
Thank you, President Wallace. There are two items on the planning and zoning committee this evening, the first of which is a petition of Teresa Saley-DVAM on behalf of the Whole Pet LLC for a special use permit for an animal clinic at 810 South Route 59 in the Bartlett Common Shopping Center. The leased space for the veterinarian clinic contains 2,778 square feet and will offer a traditional and holistic medicine and treatment for animals. The proposed use does not include overnight boarding or outdoor kennels. Staff has recommended approval with the conditions, including consistent employee monitoring and pickup of animal waste in the designated grass area adjacent to the parking lot at the north end of the shopping center building. Plan Commission conducted a public hearing on July 10 on the petitioner's petition for a special use and recommended approval, subject to conditions, and made the requisite findings a fact. With that, I move to pass ordinance 2014-61, an ordinance approving a special use permit for the Whole Pet Animal Clinic as presented.
Second.
Second.
Moved by trustee Camer, seconded by trustee Shipman. Is there any discussion? The only question that I had on this was, are they here, is the petitioner here?
Yes, they are.
One of the notes that I read from the zoning board was about the concern that there's an area for the dog, doo-doo, doo-doo.
Yes.
Yeah. I was confused as to like where that was at. Is it like a big area? Is it?
Okay, on the...
It seems like it's all cement back there.
Yeah, the north, we're on the northernmost unit of the strip, and there's some parking, and then there's grass on the other side before the boundary line.
Okay.
I believe that's the area.
The site map doesn't show it very well, but it's just north of those parking spaces is all grass area.
It's not right behind Bannerman, I'm assuming?
No. It's to the north of the shopping center.
Oh, okay, yeah. I can see it in the colored map. Okay. I know we have the dogs, so that's always our concern. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Camer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Good luck.
The second item concerns the Bartlett FEMA flood control project. Darren Olson of Kristomer B. Burke Engineering LTD filed a petition for a special use permit for the excavation and construction of flood storage basins in wetland areas. The sites where the wetlands are present and which will be disturbed are the parcel, which is owned by the village of Streamwood, but is within the village of Bartlett, that is located east of Prospect, north of the Metro Tracks, and south of North Avenue. And the second parcel is the former Geller parcel, which is now owned by the village, located east of Prospect, south of the Metro Tracks, and north of the shopping center on Prospect. The special use permit is necessary under the Bartlett Building Code because there are wetlands in these parcels. Special use permit is necessary to construct flood improvements in the wetlands. This is part of the process in connection with the Illinois Emergency Management, Federal Emergency Management Agency Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, where the village applied for and received $5.1 million grant through FEMA. The village also applied for a permit to do this work in the wetland areas with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, which issued a letter of no objection, and the village also received a sign-off for the project from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. Staff recommends approval of the special use permits, subject to the village procuring a final permit from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers prior to the issuance of a building permit. The Plan Commission conducted a public hearing at its July 10, 2014 meeting, and recommended approval of the special use permit, subject to the conditions, and made the requisite findings a fact. With that, I move the passage of ordinance 2014-62, an ordinance granting a special use permit to disturb wetland areas for the Bartlett FEMA flood control project as presented.
Second.
Moved by trustee Camer, seconded by trustee Martin. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Camer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That would be all.
Thank you, trustee Camer.
This evening.
Next item on the agenda is under building committee, Chairman Martin.
I have no report this night. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman Martin. Next item on the agenda is under finance and golf committee, Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one item on the finance and golf committee agenda this evening, the intergovernment, which is item number C2, the intergovernmental pool benefit cooperative membership. I think we've talked about this quite a bit already, so at this point, I'll just entertain a motion to approve that membership.
So moved.
Second. Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Shipman.
Are there any comments on the issue? No, I'm just, I will say that I feel very strongly about this, and I'd urge you all to vote no on this. I don't like the notion that we don't have an alternative before the board. We either have to join the pool or not. There's no decrease in premiums, and, you know, I'm not entirely convinced that this $2 million in savings is real. I think it would be more real if we were talking about reducing the premiums, but we're not. So I'm going to vote no on this. I urge you all to also vote no.
And the premiums in question, I guess I'd have a question for a certain representative here from IBBC.
If, Greg, if you could take the podium here, if you wouldn't mind.
I guess to reference Chairman Ranky's question, it does look like the premium for some portion of this, at least, to go up with the new proposal, right?
Yeah, the total is eight tenths of a percent of your budget, averaging a little over eight percent in the last five years. This is hardly a big move. What it does do is create transparency to something that's been transparent, and the only comparison I can make, you never do a federal improvements budget over $5 million and not specify what the project is. Now, this time, you're going to see an accounting balance that costs a negative.
And just to clarify, and I, just from talking at the last meeting, the last time that we brought this up, as a group health insurance program is concerned, this is just a way to pool the risk.
Finance.
To finance and pool the risk that's involved with all these different agencies. So we, as a village, still have the ability to trim back programs for the people that are participating.
Correct. Trustee Ranky's question, you have more choices now than you ever had before. Before, Blue Cross would give you what they wanted to sell, or if you wanted to make a change. They'd give us carte blanche, or actually, they'd give their HR department carte blanche in fact, to decide what they want to do with the benefit plan, and we just priced it according without the sales aspect of Blue Cross telling you what it is, what it's going to be.
Okay. And, go ahead.
Well, you indicated that there'd be, that we would have some flexibility with the programs, but that flexibility isn't before us. I mean, we don't have any option.
The flexibility comes during open enrollment, when staff, HR, Valerie, our public works, unions, look at our benefit plan. We do that. We decide what those benefits are going to be, whether we're going to decrease them, keep them the same. Then we run it by our brokers, tell them what we want our benefit plan to be, and they cost us accordingly. That'll happen when we do our next open enrollment.
I think it should happen on an annual or biannual basis.
It does happen on an annual basis.
I've never seen that.
Is it December? Jeff, is it December when it?
Yeah, December 1 is open enrollment.
But, so switching over now won't have any effect on the open enrollment date?
When will our new open enrollment be if we go with IPBC?
You asked us for November 1.
November 1, now. We will have an open enrollment, and before that, we begin looking at our benefit plan with Gallagher, our employees, our unions, and deciding what type of health insurance benefits that we want to provide. And then we go to Gallagher, they cost that out through premiums, bill us every month, and then at the end of the plan year, as Greg explained, if we're under, which currently our claims are under from what we're paying in premiums, we'll get a dividend back. That's actually how our premiums are going to be reduced, through this dividend sharing and getting money back, instead of giving it to the insurance company on a fully insured basis and then keeping it.
Well, I would suggest that there's probably two ways that the village could do that. That's one. Another is adjusting the benefit package itself, the percentage of employees, yeah.
That's absolutely right. We, the board had very clear direction to reduce these costs, and the first year, which was last year, I cut out two significant, we talked about this at budget time, two significant benefits that this year should save, conservatively, $80,000. When the police union comes on board, it will be $110,000. That was year one. I have committed in the second year to look at, as we move into this next budget, another significant round of cuts to the benefits that will save us money as we did the first year. I don't think that has anything to do with IPBC. That's us. That's a platform to save money, given the structure, but in terms of saving money to our budget relative to benefits, did that last year, certainly at the board's direction, and have committed to do that every year.
Well, if we have 165 employees, and the premiums are about 20, I think the village portion of the premiums are about $20,000 per employee, right? So that works out to be, what, 3.1 million?
It's 3.285.
3.285 million dollars a year. So $80,000, with all due respect, is a drop in the bucket. I mean, we need to save the taxpayers every dime we can, and I appreciate the $80,000, but I think we need to do more. So to me, this seems like, this seems like a diversion.
No.
I would like to see more of a focus in on restructuring the plan. You know, I want to take care of the employees, obviously, because they're all wonderful, but we also need to do our fiduciary duty with regards to the taxpayer money. So I think that we need to do more here, and I would like to see more transparency in that process.
Well, this is the transparency vehicle. We're just going to have more power than your current arrangement to change the plan the way you want to change it. If you want to gut it, you know, we can gut it. We just have to know that you're going to be in compliance with your union contracts and make sure everything's done in an appropriate fashion. It's just that you'll have more choices on our side than you'll have just negotiating with any other broker in Blue Cross, because we have the transparency, and Blue Cross has given us the power to pick and choose benefits in any way, shape, or form without their discretion.
If we stay with what we've got, it's going to go up, right? That's a concern, so.
But if it operates the way that they tell us that it operates, it wouldn't necessarily go up, because they can trim the plan, which goes back to my original...
No, no, no. If we stay with what we have now.
Trustee Martin, let me finish, all right? Which goes back to the original point, is why would we join the pool if we can already cut our premiums?
Well, it's a twofold benefit, as far as I understand it. Joining IBBC really does not have anything to do with the premium per employee. Has nothing to do with it. The only thing that can change that is the actual benefit package itself.
Right.
And that's what the village will still have the control to change. And that's what we will, at the next budget meeting, still have the control to change.
So then why are we buying into the pool, then?
Because then it gives you another layer of ways to save money on a shared risk basis. Is that a good way to put it?
Correct. Correct. And are we going to actually see savings? When does that actually happen?
Well, let me give you, let me give you an example. The pool this year spent $175 million. Their dividend back turned out to be 14%. They've done some cost-cutting things, added wellness programs, they made changes to the program, they asked us to renegotiate the RX program, and it's all paid off. The stop loss was complete, was another $2.4 million in savings, because we negotiated better contract terms. So those member communities are getting back 14 cents on the dollar. That's what you're not getting back in your current arrangement, because the dividend and the risk is being kept by Blue Cross. You guys probably had an extremely good year. That's why we're looking at your numbers going forward in the face of 9% trend. We're only moving you up eight tenths of a point, because Blue Cross is looking at you guys and making a boatload. And they don't need to make a boatload. You need to keep that money for yourselves. We just give you the transparent vehicle, because we have all the communities and the strength to make Blue Cross transparent. And that's what joint purchasing does. You know, no one but a 21-year-old goes to the small 7-Eleven to buy a case of beer, but when you need to buy it, and you need to buy in bulk, you go, you go to where you're going to get good savings. Yeah, and this is no different. No one gets into an intergovernmental, because they're going to lose money.
I think there is some confusion as far as how the pool operates. You know, when you get into, when you get into group health insurance, people are like deer in the headlights. I really don't want to deal with it all. IBBC, am I saying that right?
IPBC.
IPBC essentially doesn't take away our ability as a board to adjust what some people would consider a Cadillac plan for employees. It absolutely does nothing for that flexibility, but what it does do is allow us them, a village, another vehicle to try to save money.
Options.
Now, is it good or bad? I don't know. That's why I was asking for more options before.
Well, I've looked at the bylaws for the IPBC. I've read all the materials provided to me by the village staff, and, you know, it just appears like it's just another layer of administration that we don't necessarily need.
Is there any other discussion?
My question is, the purpose of starting this exercise in the first place was to make sure that we were compliant with the national healthcare program.
Yes. And also, as Valerie stated in the last meeting, that there was more of a need to ratchet down costs, and some aspects of IPBC kind of changed over time to make it a little easier for Bartlett to want to join.
Hearing none, the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Camer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
No.
Martin?
Yes.[1749.54]
Ranky?
No.
Shipman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President, that's all we have on financing golf tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Next item on the agenda, if I can find it here after all of these consent agendas. Orne, you might need to get me glasses. There's D seven, under License and Ordinance Committee, Chairman Carbonaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two items on the committee tonight. Next is, thank you, Mayor, ordinance 2014-64 is an ordinance amending the Bartlett Liquor Control Ordinance. It increases the number of Class B liquor licenses to seven. With that, I move the passage of ordinance 24, 2014-64, an ordinance amending section three dash three dash two dash three, Class B of the Bartlett Liquor Control Ordinance.
Second. Then moved by trustee Carbonaro, seconded by trustee Martin. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Second item on the agenda for tonight, ordinance 2014-65 is an ordinance amending the Bartlett Liquor Control Ordinance. It creates a Class C license and increases the number of Class C liquor licenses to five.
Second.
With that, I move the passage of ordinance 2014-65, an ordinance amending section three dash three dash two dash four, Class C of the Bartlett Liquor Control Ordinance.
Second. Moved by trustee Carbonaro, seconded by trustee Cammer. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Shipman?
No.
Motion carries.
And with that, thank you, Mr. President, I have nothing else.
Thank you, Chairman Carbonaro. Next on the agenda is Public, Leeson Health Committee, Chairman Shipman?
Nothing under Leeson Health tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Shipman. Next item on the agenda, item F, under Public Works Committee, Chairman Aaronz?
Thank you, Mr. President. The first three items under Public Works were covered under the consent agenda. Item F four is the Emerald Ash Borer Update and Acceleration Plan. And Dan, if you want to take us through this, I'd appreciate it. But certainly not all of it.
We just want to see the map.
Just a general update is all we need.
Thank you, Chairman Aaronz. One of the first tasks that I looked into, once I started in the end of June, was the Emerald Ash Borer Plan. Since that time, we've completed a survey of the entire village, a walking survey of actually going out and measuring the trees, getting an accurate count, and as I'm sure all of you know, the majority of the ash trees are dead at this point. We've got, one of the biggest issues that we ran into is, originally, we were hoping only seventy-five percent would die. That number's closer to ninety-seven percent, so we have more trees to remove. Based on that, we currently have a contract with Trees Are Us, a two-year contract, three hundred thousand each year for 2014 and 2015. Based on our survey and the numbers that we have, we've got more to remove, and the dollar amounts associated with that are attached in the packet. What we're proposing to do to accelerate the removal of the ash trees is continue with the existing 2014 contract, which is the three hundred thousand dollar limit. They'll be done with that by mid-October. We would like to continue with removals going forward until, they estimate, and it all depends on what the winter is, if we have a winter like last year, they'll have to stop for a period, but if we have a decent winter, they would be able to continue through the winter. But they're comfortable that they would be able to remove all the ash trees, or at least an additional thirty-one hundred roughly, ash trees, and be done, along with our crews removing trees, we would be done with the removals by September of next year. That has a cost associated with it, and we're recommending that we enter, amend Trees Are Us' contract in the amount of, not to exceed one point four, three eight million.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you. That concludes the public works.
Want to make a motion to approve it or...
Oh, a motion for it. Sorry.
One quick, we did notice that in the contract document that's in the packet, the unit prices were off. We will make sure that that gets revised. The resolution numbers are accurate, the contract numbers are off, we will make sure that that gets revised before we send it to the contractor, if it gets approved.
I would move that we pass resolution 2014-65...
Sixty-six.
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 Sixty-six. A resolution letting bids and approving of an amended tree removal agreement with Trees Are Us.
Second. Moved by trustee Aaronz, seconded by trustee Martin. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Question. Are we actually pulling the money ahead from next year's budget to use it for this year?
We are not. If you'll recall, last year, we had indicated that we would use developer deposits to take the trees down, and the increase in the trees that we're restoring would come from the General Corporate Fund in terms of some of our reserves. And so, this is money we have, and this is a recommendation to step up the pace of taking these trees down, and since we have more, we need to spend more and pick up the pace, because our residents would really like to get those dead trees out of their front yard.
Thank you. To that end, Madam Administrator, I get a lot of questions from residents saying, "Well, when is my tree going to get done?" And I'm looking at this map, I'm sure that makes a lot of sense to the arborist and perhaps to Dan, but it makes no sense to the average person. Is there a way that we can make a note, perhaps on the website, Paula, or something that says, "Oh, this area, about this time," or, you know, not holding everybody to an exact date and time, but, you know, fall of 2014, we should, that type of thing or something?
We're working on that map. Now that Trees Are Us is pretty consistent, we're removing about twenty trees a day, we can start planning out where that'll be, and we're going to, we're trying to put a map together that we'd be able to post on the internet.
Looking at the map, I assume there is some system to this. Looks a little like some of the crayons my kid did seventeen years ago, but...
It seems, kind of as a dovetail off of trustee Shipman's comment, I get a lot of those questions too, and most recently, you know, they were asking about pinpointing a, a general time when their tree would be cut down, and asking that question, I think Mr. Dinjus pointed out that you can't just jump from place to place and cut down trees, you got to do it in sections. So it's hard to determine, you can determine what section you're going to next, but you can't jump from place to place. Is that, that's accurate, right? Because it's a lot of equipment.
Right.
You want to bang, bang?
They're taking neighborhood by neighborhood.
Yeah, so what we're working on now, if I'm, if I'm hearing you correctly, is we're working on some type of a system that would allow us, when somebody asks us the question, to say, you know, either go to the website, and we'll tell you approximate dates, like this is when we anticipate they will be hitting your area, or, or we can have it readily available at the village. When do you think that would be? Not until you get a wall.
I would think, you know, I don't, I'm not sure, within the next month or so, we'd be able to put something together.
Give an idea, okay. Good. And then, one last thing, the ones that are, are we taking care of the ones that seem to be dangerous? Like, like, there's some people that have come to me and say, "I think this tree's going to fall over." Are we, like, sending a special crew out to take that down if we notice, or somebody reports that, "Hey, this is really bad"?
Yeah, if we get a report that it's dangerous, we go out and inspect it. If we confirm that it is hazardous, we would, either our crews, or we'd have the contractor address that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now I can...
Thank you, trustee Aaronz. Next item on the agenda is new business. I have a couple of items that have fallen under new business for timing purposes. First one is Marco's Pizza Class B Liquor License Request. An attached, the information, owners are requesting Class B liquor license, allows retail sale of beer and wine to consumption on the premises from eight to one, Sunday through Thursday and Friday, Saturday from eight to two. All the appropriate information is here, so I would entertain a motion to approve this request. Second. Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Aaronz. The clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Okay. Next on the item under new business is Walgreens, Class C Liquor License Request. I've reviewed this packet as well, everything's in order. If there's no objection to the board, I intend on issuing that license. Okay. One other thing I wanted to add on new business, and I got this question too, and I was going to ask Mr. Dinjus when we had the discussion, but somebody has requested the ability for them to pay for their tree to be cut down. I sent a note to Paula, the note that I received, and requested that we have some kind of a mechanism set up, attempt to set up a mechanism if somebody would like to go out, find a reputable contractor with all the right licensing and, and have their tree cut down out of their own pocket. Is that something that we're progressing on, or is it, I mean, it could be a one-off, so it might not be worth the time, or...
The issue, it's something that we can do, we would just want to be able to permit it, so we can keep track of what parkway trees are being removed, and that the contractor removing it is licensed and has a certificate of insurance that covers the village, should something happen when they do that removal. So we'd want to be able to monitor it. If that's something you would like us to pursue, we can do that, but with the implementation of the removal plan, we will be able to tell people that within the next year, your ash tree will be removed, and are they going to be willing to remove that, you know, pay for that removal if they know within the next year it'll be removed? I don't know.
I understand that some people are just tired of looking at it and say, "I want to get rid of this thing." So, if you don't mind, if we could look into that gem, and, and if it's, if it's really, it's really like crazy legalese, we'll just have to tell them that, but it would be nice to be able to say, "Hey, you know what, there is a procedure, you can..."
I don't think it's that complicated a process. I think we could.
Okay. Thank you. Any other new business? Hearing none, we'll move on to questions and answers. Does the board have any questions at this point?
I have a comment. I have a comment, if I can put Madam Administrator on the spot for just a moment. We went by the FEMA control, FEMA flood control project, kind of, before I had a chance to say anything, and since we're blessed with having a, a full audience tonight, I wonder if you could give us just kind of a two-minute update on where we are on the whole flood control project from the last nine, ten years, and kind of where, where this has put us as a benchmark on what our ultimate goals are.
Sure.
And keep it very elementary, because most of these folks have heard enough about water tonight, so...
Be happy to do that. September 10th of '08, we had the kind of rainfall that we've never had in that same timeframe, and had flooding in different areas all over town. And the next day, we called Chris Burke, and he came out here, and we began to work with DuPage County and Streamwood to acquire property and begin to identify all the different areas in town where we had problems. And so, let me tell you about the low-hanging fruit, the ones we were able to accomplish fairly quickly. Vill Olivia, we built a berm out in Vill Olivia, and were able to solve their drainage problem relatively quickly. We began to work on the big project down in DuPage County at Beaver Pond, and that included getting the forest preserve to agree to let us put a whole lot of water on their property, and to run lines from Beaver Pond over to the forest preserve property to take that additional water, should it come from the skies. And as you can see now, if you drive out on Stern's Road west of 59, that big area that's been dug and shaped and landscaped, that's on Forest Preserve property, and they indeed allowed us to do that. DuPage County, in their stormwater prevention program, funded a tremendous amount of that. Bartlett's portion was relatively small compared to the value of working with the forest preserve for their land, and with DuPage County, who was able to fund the majority of that project. So, in the Beaver Pond area, that was the big project down there, and it's completed, it looks great, and I think we've got a ribbon cutting, as it were, coming up on 28th of August. Then we moved over to the other side of town, where it was a little bit more difficult, because we didn't have the open spaces to put the water. And in the Hearthwood area, those folks took a lot of water in those two days, and so we began to look at places that we could store that water, and secondly, how to fund it. And we were able to identify pieces on prospect that were within the village of Streamwood, did some intergovernmental agreements with Streamwood to allow us to use that land for drainage while it retains within the Streamwood Village borders. So we had phase one, and, and because I'm not an engineer, I will tell you what we did was to dig a hole to hold water, and that took quite some time, and we actually funded that project ourself. And that took the heat off the majority of flooding on that side of town. The folks throughout the north end of town had some flooding, and I think that that helped a lot. But it wasn't the whole solution, and because it was on the other side of the tracks, and in a different drainage area than Hearthwood Farm, while it helped a little bit, we needed to move further. And so, what we did was figure out a way to get five million dollars out of the federal government, and find another piece of property up along the railroad tracks, that we could dig a big hole and put water in it and hold it from those people's yards and those people's basements and those people's first-floor living situations. And in fact, we were awarded that money last summer, and today, you approve the special use to build that pond on the other side of the tracks. In addition to that five million, we're building the second phase of that piece up on the Streamwood property, which will solve, I pretty much think, any sort of drainage areas that we would have. There were some isolated, and we intend to begin that project this fall over at Hearthwood Farm and have it finished next year. There were some isolated pieces of flooding that we have been able to address as well up on the north side by the park and by Independent School. The homes up there took a lot of water that sat in their streets for a long time, and in a couple of areas, it climbed up their yards and into their homes. And as part of this five million, we're building berm, getting the Park District's approval, because they own the park across the street, Shoppy Park, and we will be able to ensure that those folks in that area don't take that kind of water into their streets or their homes. In addition to that, as you're aware, on South Bartlett Road, you said to be quick, I'll try to wrap this up. On South Bartlett Road, we all know where the dip is, and by the horse farm, and collects water in there, and that's one of the first things we look at when we've had a heavy rain, is do we, is that open? And a lot of times, it's not. And so we, that is DuPage County's road. So we went to DuPage County, the highway department, not the water folks, because they've already done with us, and said, "How about you pay for this, since it's your road and it's flooding out..." Not only the road, but some of those people right there on Amherst were getting a lot of water in their backyards, and some of them were getting it, I think, in their, their homes. So we agreed with the county that, or the highway department, that we would split the cost of that, and then we went to Commonwealth Edison to make sure that they would let us run the line to take the water down along behind those homes, which is on Commonwealth Edison property, and we were able to tie it into the basin with the banks of the creek back there. So, and as a matter of fact, that is all complete, if you've seen it. So there's no more flooding of the road, there's no more flooding of those homes or their backyards, and as a matter of fact, being able to carry that water all the way down ensures that that whole block won't ever have that water, because now there's a place to put it. So, there's a few other ones in between, but I think those are the major ones.
So we're most of the way through the big project?
We absolutely are.
And percentage-wise, how much of this was paid for by Bartlett residents? Roughly? Less than twenty-five percent?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I'd say less than maybe even twenty percent.
Very good. Thank you. Sorry that took so long.
Oh, that's good information. I mean, it doesn't get talked about, but people should know that that's a lot of work. I mean, it doesn't get talked about, but people should know that that's a lot of work, and it's been done. And I know many villages that don't get that extensive, so, well done.
It's a subject that you don't talk about much.
Right. And so, there's water in your basement, right?
It's being done, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Valerie.
You have something to add?
Yeah, go ahead.
At this time, I did beg trustee Martin to cut him in into this later, but I just wanted to say thank you to you, chief, and your staff for a wonderful national night out. My opinion, it was probably the best ever. We had a dog that was catching frisbees. We had Batman and Superman, who took time out of their crime-fighting duties. We had a train for the kids. Benny the Bull was there, wishful thinking for next season. But I think we were a little lax at the security checkpoints. Kind of noticed, you know, there was a band of stormtroopers there. Darth Vader was there. You know, one of the Empire officers was walking around, asking people to see their identification papers. So I was just wondering if we could, you know, beef that up next year, you know? The reason I bring that up is, as I was walking, there was two young boys that came with their adult transportation providers, and as one of the stormtroopers walked by, the little boy leaned over to the other one and said, "We're in trouble. Did you bring your lightsaber?"
That's great.
I thought that was kind of cute. But once again, a great job to you and your staff. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Well done.
And I was joking on the security, okay?
Yeah, also, thank you very much. As everybody's worried, I have the true definition of a team sport, and all of our friends, we've been doing about their assistance and leadership, and so, of course, none of us can handle it, but, I've always said, we appreciate your support.
Thank you.
I think, just to, I mean, very apropos, we just got an email today saying that we're the fourth safest village in Illinois our size now, right? So...
If you can correlate.
Fourth safest, yes. Very good. Anything else?
No, that was the best interstellar goat block party I've ever been to. I didn't even know that we had subdivisions, people from Tadaween, Naboo, and Indoor.
Those people take that serious, these are...
Yeah, I did talk to one of the stormtroopers, and he said that is the new SWAT uniform for Bartlett. Good job, chief.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, hearing none.